Councilmember Allbritton.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
And Councilmember Kaczynski.
Right here.
Here.
We have a, we have a quorum, Vice Mayor.
Alrighty, please stand for the pledge.
George, I'd like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'd love to.
Do you remember it?
I'd pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Alright, do I hear a motion to excuse the mayor this evening?
Shall we know.
Alright, second?
Thank you.
Yeah, Russell, you want to call the question, please?
Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, Councilmember Jablonski, do you want to make a motion? It would make it the fastest on our record. No, we have the people's business tonight, so I'm, I just, I kid. Alright, Russell, have you got names for public comment?
We have, it looks like, two speakers that wish to speak tonight. Vice Mayor, the first speaker is Lorena. Um, sorry, I can't make out the last name, but Lorena?
Calber.
Calber, okay, would you please come forward?
Yes.
You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, I just moved here from Weston. We closed on March 2nd, we moved into Palomino and Hancock. I have a boarding and training facility of horses. We wanted to purchase here to be an equestrian community and not move to Ocala. Plus, I have three children here that are still going to school. Currently, I have a training and boarding facility that's been in existence for about seven years or so. And I'm having, yes.
You're speaking to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is the mic on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Recently, I've had some issues of police people driving by my, my facility saying that they can't park on the side of my facility. And I have clients who are coming in for lessons, for boarding, for training, seeing their horses. And I was, I thought this was an equestrian community where we could have these businesses and these horses. And I'm having an issue with that, so I don't know what to do.
The issues with parking, people parking in the swells?
Yes.
Okay, so it's against law throughout our entire town to park in swells?
Okay.
If, and I should be answering this after everybody else goes, but since you're asking.
Okay.
If you have customers come, they need to park on the inside of your gate, your fence, they, they can't park up by the road. That's everywhere in town, not just you.
So, I have pastures that are for horses, though you want me to make those into parking lots?
I, you need to do whatever you need to do, I'm not asking you to do anything specifically, I'm just telling you what the law is.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, and all horse facilities have the same issue, so they find a place on their property, generally near the barn, that there are customers.
Well, they are near, right near my fence, near my barn, they're not bothering anybody. And in fact, there's businesses on Hancock and also on West Palomino that have the same thing, and they're parking there and they have no issues, so. And also, the Moores on Sheridan, the same thing, they have a big business that's been there for years. And now, all of a sudden, it's an issue, so like, how are we supposed to run our business? I mean, I don't want to convert my pastures that are meant for horses into a concrete parking lot.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm, you need to find a place for them to park off the road, that's all. It's the same throughout town, I mean, if they're doing it, they're getting away with it. I'm not sure, maybe your neighbors are calling, I don't know, while the police are showing up at your place.
I mean, I'm not bothering my neighbors at all.
Anybody else want to add to it?
Uh, no, I, just to reiterate what Vice Mayor said, we've had this problem pretty much all the way across the town with people who own landscape businesses, they're equipment trailers, things of that nature. You're not allowed to permanently, or to park in the road right of ways. So if you have a business in, whether, whatever it is, in your property, you need to, like a nursery, you need to be able to contain your customers or your employees or whatever you have inside that property. So, that's just the, the rule, that's the general rule.
I wish I would have known this before moving there, then.
You would have gone to Ocala?
Well, I don't know, Carolina's something.
Okay.
I mean, I, I wanted to come here to, you know, promote this, and this is what I thought this was, this, you know.
Well, there's rules. We're not like Weston, if there's rules.
It's an equestrian community, correct?
Yes.
And they, they provide support for equestrian people?
Absolutely.
Which I have.
Okay.
If, if I may?
Yes.
I, I, one issue that I had, I was gonna say it for my comments, is I would like to possibly discuss, discuss broadening some of the parking issues, especially related to equestrian facilities. Because I do know that in Sunshine Ranches, there are equestrian facilities that really don't have a place for them to park. And, and I, I just drove past her property, and I don't know if you know the best, Virginia Best? Her, okay. It's. At East Palomino and Hancock. It's a white fence, it's.
Sure. Now we know what you're talking about, yeah.
And there is no place for her people to park.
And it's not like I have thirty cars there, I mean.
Right.
I really don't.
And I understand it's gonna be a policy decision that we would have to discuss in the future.
It's, it's the law, I mean, I'm not sitting here telling you my opinion on it, I'm just telling you the way it is. And to David's point, these things can be changed.
Perfect, I would appreciate that, thank you.
That's, that's about it.
Good.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, the next speaker is Noel Hollisworth, and then followed up by Danielle Burenke?
Burenke.
Okay, she will be the final speaker.
Uh, Noel Hollisworth, 198th Avenue. Requested the last two meetings that we make requests for mosquitoes, spraying, aerial. Still have the same problem out west by my house. And that with the additional rain that's coming in, starting tomorrow, the tide is coming up even higher and will last a longer period of time. And so I'd ask the town to request aerial spraying again for our area. So maybe we can kill at least one or two of the millions of mosquitoes that are out there. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, may I?
I was just gonna ask Andy if he, I asked him to follow up with mosquito control.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna ask Andy to follow up in your comments. Alright.
Okay, Vice Mayor, the last speaker, Danielle, would you step forward, please?
Hello, I just want to raise a concern, as I am an equestrian rider myself, and I live right on Volunteer 148th Avenue. And I do trail to the equestrian park that's right there. I noticed there's no equestrian crossing signs, I did notice there are plenty on Griffin Road. I was hoping maybe we could consider, you know, just for the safety of myself, the community, to have those horse crossing or horse awareness signs by that park.
So you're suggesting on Volunteer Road?
Yes, 148th, because there is a trail that goes to that park. That's.
We can answer you when, when all the speakers are finished.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any thoughts?
Sounds like something, sounds like something that we, we should address, if we're doing it on Griffin Road. We need more trails, makes sense to me.
Yeah. Good suggestion, thank you. Alrighty, I think that's, any, any other public comment?
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, let's see, council member comments. Oh, I'm sorry, board reports, I need to look at the agenda here. Board reports, Andy, George?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why not? How you doing, George Morris, Chair of the Judiciary Board? Uh, two months ago, we did not have a meeting, so I didn't make a report the last time, just wanted to refresh everybody on that. On our previous meeting, we had consideration for property in Rolling Oaks to add to the CIP project request for a piece of property. Um, the board talked about it, and we decided to, that it wasn't, didn't meet requirements. And we also had a presentation by Gene Morrisheese, I believe is his name. He's a member of the public who came to our board meeting to discuss the pros and cons and different conceptions of the way the drainage system works, and he made some suggestions to us as a board. And I believe he made some comments, and I believe the council will know about that. Other than that, that's pretty much it. One important change is, is that we decided and voted on to change the meeting, I believe, was the third Thursday of each month versus.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. Yeah, they go start with a T. So the, the times, I should say, the, the time is the same, the date has changed, so please make a note of that and adjust that in your calendar. Other than that, that's it, thank you very much, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
George, thanks for your service to the community. Any other board reports? Nope, no other board chairs here. Alrighty, council member comments, who'd like to lead off, Gary?
Alright, I'll take that. I'll take that football and run backwards for a few minutes. Good evening, everybody, um, just a couple of announcements. I realize we have a, a very short agenda, so I won't be very long on this. Um, we have Had Matt at the Barn, can everybody hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, we have Had Matt at the Barn on 9/11 from eight to two, it has shredding and prescription drop-off. Uh, we also have, right after that, Andy will let us know on the time, when it gets to administration comments. We have the 9/11 ceremony here at Town Hall. So that's something that, something that we should all attend. Real important, next Tuesday, we have the budget workshop at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers on the 17th. We've got a lot to go over, we've got an extensive budget this year. And I've got some stuff to go over with everybody here that I've been working on, so, with staff. So I want to make, make all that available at that time. Uh, the Flowmobile is back, it'll be here on the 25th of August, from 10:00 to 2:00. The, the difference between here, before COVID and after COVID is, an appointment is required. So you can call Town Hall, Town Hall and make an appointment if you need to get your driver's license re-upped or tags re-upped or something, something that involves a DMV. We have a photo contest going on by the Rural Arts Board. It's for the next year's calendar, it's, the main theme is our parks. And the photos must be submitted, and you can get this off the website, by the 13th of September. And basically, that's all I have, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Gary. You're welcome.
I'll take it if you don't mind. This is Mayor, council, staff, and residents, can you hear me alright?
Yeah.
I was able to attend the Broward League of Cities meeting here Monday. And I know this is a very controversial issue, it's the COVID issue that everybody's talking about, but there were some facts given that kind of startled me, I hadn't heard them before. There are three districts of hospitals here in Broward County, it's the Broward, Memorial, and Baptist. And all three have three, four, five hospitals under their control in the Broward County area. And the Broward County Hospital District reported they had 700 cases of COVIDs in their hospital on August the 9th. Seven hundred. Ninety-six percent of those were unvaccinated. And I thought that was really, you know, a shame. Now, eight of those are children under the age of 12. And that's shocking. Two of those are on ventilators. So that, that's how bad this virus is. Memorial Hospital, they had 623 cases in their facility. And ninety-four percent of them were unvaccinated, and they say it was growing rapidly. And then Baptist broke it down a little bit better, Baptist reported 500 cases as of August the 9th. Fifty-three percent were female, forty-six percent were male, and then they broke it down. Under the age of four, there were eight kids, under the age of four. Five to seventeen years old, there were thirty-nine, that's seven, seven and a half percent. Eighteen to forty-nine, that's the biggest group, alright, that was forty-nine percent of the people. That's almost 250 people that are sick, and that's the young people, that's not the older generation, that's the young. And the other two groups are fifty to sixty-four, there were seventy-eight people there, and sixty-five and over, there were ninety-five people. Alright? Now here's the one that shocked me the most, of all the patients in ICU on ventilators, twenty percent of them are young pregnant women. That shocked me, honestly truly shocked me. Reason for that, every COVID patient in the hospital on a ventilator has a nurse assigned to them. And if she's pregnant, there's two nurses, there has to be one for the baby and one for them. So the Broward doctors, nurses, and staff are asking everybody to get vaccinated. The staff is tired, they're run down, they're wore out. And we let our guards down in June. In June, there was eight to fourteen percent increase in COVID cases at the end of June, the last two weeks in June. That's now up to eighty to eighty-five percent infection. We let our guard down on the 4th of July, we thought things were getting better. People took their masks off, quit social distancing for just a short period of time, and now it's come back to bite us in the tooth. So, if you're not aware, there's been thirty-six million people infected in the United States, over 620,000 have died. So if you look at that in numbers, if you took the population of Broward, I mean, of, of the city of Fort Lauderdale and the city of Miami and just wiped those people out, just took them off the map like or so, you know, the city itself, that's how many people have died in the United States. So this is a bad thing. I know it's controversial, I know people don't like the shots, some do, some don't, but I really think that the shots help. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody, David Kaczynski, District 4. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Let's see, uh, yeah, I think the issue brought up earlier about the marking of horse path, 148th Volunteer, and that path, I think that's a really, really, really good idea. And as I mentioned earlier, I would like to also discuss the parking issues with regard to equestrian facilities. Maybe there's some kind of, uh, middle road, road we can figure something out. Third, I want to make sure that the council keeps the K. List issues to the forefront. Make sure that we're cognizant of his fight and just keep Mr. K. List in our thoughts. And last, as I was going in work this morning, I was listening to the radio where I heard that Broward County leads, not Florida, but the United States, in the highest rate of COVID. Number two, second county in the country, Harris County in Texas, that's by Houston. Number third, Miami-Dade County. So, we're, we're pretty heavy, folks. If you haven't had the vaccine, I, I really, really want to encourage everybody to get it. It, uh, it, it seems to be working. So, that concludes my thoughts. Thanks.
Good, good, thank you, David. Yeah, I want to reiterate, I was over at Cleveland Clinic earlier this week, and I haven't seen any numbers published for them since the state doesn't publish the statistics on the hospitalizations or COVID cases by town like they used to. But at Cleveland Clinic, they have ninety-one in the ICU and the emergency room, they've created a COVID corner, as they call it, and there's ten there, so they have a hundred and one people. At a relatively small hospital compared to the other systems in Broward County. So, yeah, we're number one and two between us and Dade County in Florida right now. You know, I, I had heard Tampa and that area, well, that was weeks ago, now we're, that's not a statistic to be proud of. It's, it's pretty bad, I would encourage everybody to get vaccines as well. You know, I, I, I hear all the politics about it all the time, you have to make your own decision, but with the number of people dying, two jabs in the arm and you're relatively safe. And if you choose not to, please wear a mask, I mean, you see, we're all wearing them. This is the first time on the day is that we've worn masks during a meeting. You know, in the past, well, he's that far, he's that far from me, but it, it doesn't make any sense right now to, to not wear a mask. I was shocked, I went into Home Depot over the weekend where, two, three weeks ago, I wasn't wearing a mask. And nobody was really wearing them, you'd see the occasional person, when I was in there, what was it, Monday this week? Just about everybody was wearing masks, so I think people are getting the message. Marty, can you give us the dates? Gary had mentioned the August 17th workshop, but we have two public hearings, folks, to go over our budgets and potential tax increases for the next fiscal year. September what and what?
Thank you, the two public hearings is on a Monday night, September 13th, and that will start at 6:00 PM. That will comprise the final rate hearing for the solid waste and the fire. And we'll establish our official mileage rate at that time. The second is in conjunction with our second normal meeting in September. Russell, can you help me with that? That is twenty.
It's the twenty, it's the 23rd, Vice 23rd.
Twenty-third, and that will be on a Thursday night, and that will also start at six o'clock as well.
Good. So we'll have a one-hour budget hearing before, well, actually, for both meetings, it'd be a one-hour budget hearing and then go into our regular council meetings. Folks, this is your opportunity to provide input. The good news so far is that our ad valorem taxes, that's the taxes, the tax based on the real estate value of your house, we're not increasing that, it's staying at 4.25 mils. We're not going to include Tisdor, if you recall, if you've been paying taxes, you realize you're also paying for road pavement project. The, uh, the administration's done a great job of actually getting money. If you remember, two years ago, we passed a penny sales tax in Broward County to pave roads to, to really improve our transportation. Well, the town is being, paying for these road repaving projects based on that one penny sales tax, uh, tax that the county's collected. So we're not going to be, we won't have tax, we won't have a special assessment on this year's taxes for that, since we're getting the money from the county. As well, on garbage, we are on the, on trash hauling, that's also flat, those rates are not going up this year. So those three fees and assessments are not going up. The one we're challenged with is, is fire. The fire assessment, we redid the methodology because it was way out of date, it was last done in 2011. And based on the experience of the prior five years, they go and calculate how many calls come from homes, how many calls come from institutional, like the churches and the schools, et cetera. And then they start breaking down those calls into, you know, how much need or demand those different categories have. And then they divide up the, the amount of, uh, our budget for the fire department and split it up. Now, what's changed pretty substantially in our town is, we've been building a lot of houses over the last couple of years. A lot of houses are going up, so the numbers are shifting. Another important thing to realize, and you know, the agriculture and equestrian community's been brought up. If you had a barn in the backyard and you have a house, you used to pay two fire fees. Now, if it's a non-commercial barn, now if you're growing radishes out there and you're selling produce out of it, that, that's considered a commercial barn, but if you're, you know, running your horse business or you're doing various types of non-commercial activities out of your barn, you're only going to pay one fire, well, you, you'll pay one fire fee this year again. So re-swizzling again, there were more buildings, I guess you could say, than just homes that were part of that calculation, and people with barns paid a higher fee, well, now we've equalized that and we're trying to make it more fair. And obviously, more fair for the agricultural community. So I mean, I have a chicken coop out back that's on wheels, I don't have to pay for it, it's on wheels. But if I put stakes in the ground, I'd have to pay for a non-commercial barn, so. Alrighty, um, I think that's all I have in my notes here. You just get a shot or wear a mask, please, save our friends. Alright, I think that's the last of my comments, administration, or we got a legal or administration next? Legal, legal comments, thank you. Thank you, no legal comments, aside from, people will be back on Monday. Great, thank you, Richard. Andy, administration comments?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, just have three things all that came up this evening. First is the September 11th memorial service, this is the twentieth year staff has been working on an appropriate commemoration. And that's scheduled for Saturday morning, September 11th at 8:30, will be right out front by the flagpole. As I said, staff has been working on that, but I do want to give a special shout out to George Morris, who's helping us with that project as well. So, thank you, George. The next thing I wanted to touch on was the suggestion for the horse crossing outside the equestrian park, I think that's a valid idea. You mentioned horse crossing on bridge and road, I do want to point out that those aren't not crossing. They're, they're, those are county signs that were put up at our request to raise awareness. There was an incident a few years ago where somebody struck two horses that were crossing. And so we made that request to just try to raise awareness, so it's not, don't. Horse drivers don't have the right to just step out in the road and, and have cars stop. But we wanted the cars to have that awareness of it, and, you know, so far it's helped, and we'll hopefully continue to do so. But I think it's a valid suggestion to do that by the equestrian park and the surrounding places. I think there was an, oh, yes. Immediately following that meeting, you would still make that request to the county, we're dealing with on time, you've all met on, this been here before. The county's longtime pilot who did the aerial spraying has retired. They are not currently doing aerial spraying, but they have stepped up their efforts on truck spraying, which, uh, it helps, it's not the same, it's, you know, in tandem, work out much better, but they're, they're not currently aerial spraying, so they'll continue to ask for, for same. Because I know at some point, they're going to certainly need to restore that service. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Andy. Let's see, next up on the agenda, we have a resolution, Russell, would you read it into the record?
Certainly, Vice Mayor, this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Sappus Branches, Florida, approving the selection of SGS Technology LLC as the lowest-priced, most responsive and responsible proposer of the town website design services. Approving agreement with SGS Technology LLC, which establishes the scope and compensation for its services to provide town website design services. Approving a fiscal year 2020-2021 budgetary appropriation from the general fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, or town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing effective.
Don't you approve?
Second.
Alright, so Russell, I believe your department is sponsoring this project, so maybe you want to go into some detail?
Certainly, Vice Mayor, as you may or may not be aware, the town's website in its current state has been in existence for approximately ten years, it's almost, or long overdue for a refresh, if you will. I'll use the term refresh, redesign, you might use a different term, we talked about that previously. The current page, as it stands, the current website does not render to different sizes for portable devices. It has limitations as it relates to ADA compatibility. There's numerous deficiencies that we found with the site, or with the website, and so we wanted to update that. We went out with an RFP to solicit for proposals, we received six proposals. We shortlisted the six to three, had them come back in and give us basically representative tasks that we would perform on the website, and chose this company, SGS Technology, as the most responsible, responsive firm. Their proposal includes, as it stands right now, all of the, the design and the transition services from the current platform to the, to the next platform, and also hosting. All of that said, for approximately fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand dollars in the first year. On, going from that would be some hosting costs associated with that. They were the least expensive firm, they are a Florida-based firm, they have locations also outside of the state. And we were impressed with the capabilities that they showed us, that they could do with the current platform. The other benefit of utilizing this firm is that the solution that they are recommending is, is basically the same base platform that we're using now. is basically the same base platform that we're using now, which is something called WordPress, which is a very popular platform. And it will also kind of cut down the learning curve for staff to utilize it because it's what we're currently using now. The benefit of going with this firm is that they'll be able to train us, teach us how to use the site in the way that it, it can be utilized to harness all of those capabilities that we just simply just don't have right now. We don't have that expertise. They also will be working with us to integrate other services that we wish to see, such as integration of credit card payments through the website, integrating live streaming of the council meetings directly on the website as opposed to having to go through YouTube. So there's some integration benefits that we hope to achieve with the new site once it's live. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Russell, just occurred to me, I was thinking about this, will there be, you know, with the Phil, you get like a level-one Phil, the love's degree, will that be able to get facilitated through this website?
Yes, the download of forms, the submission of forms can be achieved through the, through the website, 100%.
That's good, that'll make it easier for the residents.
Correct.
So, Andy, Russell and I had a couple of conversations about this. And actually, we had a bit of a detailed one earlier. I only have one concern about this. You know, knowing what's going on with ransomware and understanding the fact that multiple municipalities in Florida have been nailed by ransomware attacks. I've been very comfortable with Tamarack. I know they've been staying on top of it, and they're well aware of the municipal government issues with ransomware. Russell told me that we can transition off of that when we want to. I really want to make sure that these guys understand and can secure us properly against any ransomware attacks. They're intending on using Amazon Web Services, AWS, as it's commonly called, to host our platform. Great platform. It'll, it'll end our performance problems we have where it takes forever sometimes to get a response back from our website. However, they're not immune to ransomware attacks either. My team can't work right now. We are, we use Accenture. Accenture hosts our, our development applications on AWS. They were hacked yesterday with a product, well, I wouldn't call it a product, but a weapon called Lockbit, which is taking down Accenture in India. So Russell is going to engage me in part of the discussions with his team, and I really want to make sure we're protected before we transition. And if there is a transition plan, it will, will be secured by a new vendor.
We'd be happy to have your expertise.
Thank you. So, keep me posted, Russell.
Absolutely.
Just for you guys who don't know, what WordPress is, is it's a, it's a platform that is called open source, it's free. You can download a copy and create your own website. It's not that easy for everybody to do it. But it's generally, I mean, thousands of companies use it. I had one for a couple of years. They're not hard to maintain, they're, they're generally secure. And any kind of business transaction, whether it's uploading documents or taking payments, there are plugins for that, like you'd use with some other products. It's extremely well-supported across the technology world. So it's a good choice to stay with what we've got because then our, our team doesn't have to learn new technologies to continue to do their work. There's really no training until we start to change things. So I completely support this. You know about WordPress, don't you, Gary?
Occasionally I have, but that one, you're the IT guy, UNC, so I rely on her advice and knowledge.
Did, Russell, did Speed provide any feedback on this?
No, he did not, Vice Mayor.
Okay. He's on vacation. Good for him. All right. Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, that's why your number and Mr. Russell and Mr. Andy's phone numbers on Speed dot on my phone.
Any public comment?
Vice Mayor, before Mr. Hollis, I did follow up with the mayor on this. And then obviously, it's subject to the vote of the four people over here tonight. But he did convey to me that he was comfortable with this item.
Good, thank you.
Neil Hollis, 1997. Bob, you took the one thought, and I felt ransomware. And I was worried about that. But the second part is the legal liability that we have with handicap accessibility. Now, nothing was said about that tonight at all. But we have a liability, very large liability. And I've seen other municipalities nailed for large sums on their websites. Now, what is going to be done in relation to being handicapped accessible with this group? Because it should be definitely a part at this time.
Russell, I believe that was the impetus for this project at the outset.
Yeah, so for having the Collinsworth missed that point, but I did indicate in my initial comments that this was one of the things that we needed to do to address the website. So it was something that was part of the scope. We do currently already utilize a company to run a script on our site to make everything ADA-compatible as far as WCAD guidelines, which are the Website Compatibility Accessibility Guidelines. We also have an accessibility statement on our page that speaks to if someone has any difficulty with any of the attachments that are on the page, if they can't read it for whatever reason, they can contact us and we will make it accessible to them in a different format. That was something that was crafted by the town attorney. It's passed legal muster. We have not had any complaints or, we've not been contested in any way for any of the content on our page as it exists right now. And we don't anticipate that being the case in the future.
Comfortable?
Ouch.
Any other public comment? All right, any other council comments? All right, Russell, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any public comment on our minutes? Come on, George, it's your turn. All right. Any discussion, guys? Okay, great. Please call the roll, Russell.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And it's that time of night, ladies and gentlemen, motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, folks, for coming out.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.